Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
This is the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board Wednesday, March 2, 2022. Wacoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall 16, Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. It is 7:00. We are broadcast live on local channel 18, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, mashpeema.gov backslash channel-18. I'd ask you all to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would just ask for a brief moment of silence for the people in Ukraine and what's going on over there, and just a couple of minutes. Thank you. Approval of minutes from our meeting on February 16. You've got them in your handy book. Patty's not here, but she put together this lovely book.
Very nice.
I don't see no problem with them.
No, I didn't have any issue.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion except the minutes as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you. Public discussion. Patrick Brady.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening, Mr. Brady.
Patrick Brady, 24 Stratford Ridge. And I'd like to address the board. I looked at today's, the minutes in the packet that was included in, in the packet for materials being distributed. And after reading that, please explain to me how any applicant coming before this board can have any confidence that they're going to receive a fair and an impartial hearing of their application. You know, the information in this packet was over 50 pages long, about 54, and it confirms that a sitting member on your board had a predetermined opposition to an applicant coming before this board. The sitting member of the board organized, led, and participated in events and made communications for the sole purpose of recruiting opposition to an applicant's application. This was made even before all the facts were relayed to the board. You know what's even more troubling? In the packet, there's some items called a fact sheet. And these fact sheets, they were wrong. They were factually inaccurate. You know, rather than allowing the Mashpee residents to learn about the project and decide for themselves, a member of your board took it upon herself to deliberately undermine that process. They obstructed it. And I watched the hearings here, and they disrupted hearings so the information couldn't come out to the people of Mashpee. You know, you, the board members, you all took an oath to be fair and impartial. But that's clearly not what happened before this board. You know, and another disturbing thing is the information in Ms. Kilpatrick's 50-some-odd pages. It's clear that two individuals running for the board, Mr. Carden and Ms. Faulkner, they were active participants in this planned opposition. You know, the credibility of this board has been severely compromised by Ms. Wagon. You know, and it's clear that as long as she's a member of this board, it's unlikely that an applicant's going to get a fair and impartial review of that application. You know, and that's really a shame because it's a disservice to the people of Mashpee and the town of Mashpee. And that's all I have to say to this board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Okay, we got five minutes before the public hearing. How about committee reports? Can we bang them out?
Yeah, I got nothing.
Cape Cod Commission.
So let's see, the Cape Cod Commission, the Cape, the Cape Cod Commission is doing some work with finding out the needs of young families with respect to childcare. So they just, they just had it in their reporter that they are, are doing a study, just like they did kind of, I'm assuming it's kind of like what they did with the new homeowners. They're looking into the, the region's need for childcare. So I thought that was really interesting. The other thing is they have convened a, I forget the name of it, but Evan, you're on it, that this work committee, the working group on stresses on development?
The, it's a working group, if I'm, it's on the perceived open space, that one?
Yeah, it's, it's trying to grapple with the conflicts between developing affordable housing and the preservation of open space, right?
Yeah, what they've been exploring has been essentially, there are lands on Cape Cod that are developed, like golf courses and recreational lands, and camps are a prime example, whereas they're developed and not protected in any legal fashion and aren't contributing towards that calculus of 86% of the cave's land areas either as developed or preserved. So there's interest from certain groups to have the commission look at their mitigation strategies and how they apply mitigation measures on developments that are abutting or on these perceived open spaces. And so I've participated in two of those, two of those meetings so far.
Can you give us a report when they're, when they're all done?
Yes, I can do that, for sure.
All right. And that was it from Cape Cod Commission. Community Preservation Committee, there was a slew of articles for funding that were submitted to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen voted to put all of them on the warrant and to recommend them all, so.
Are those ones we had already?
You guys had already commented on them, so they're all on the warrant, and if, John, correct me if I'm wrong, that I think they all got a positive vote from the Board of Selectmen this week, all the CPA articles.
Oh CPA, yes.
Yeah. I think they all did, yeah. And there was that, the new athletic track and, and field at the middle school, high school campus, that also got a positive recommendation from the capital improvements program. So those, so all the funding that was related to CPA also got passed or approved, recommended for approval by town meeting.
Thank you. Design review?
None.
Plan review?
No report.
Nothing for environmental oversight. Historic District Commission?
No report.
Military civilian advisory.
They did not meet.
Oh, I thought you were going to tell us they did. All right. Close.
All right.
Can I open the, I really have to wait?
Chair, I may have to run earlier towards the end meeting, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
You can take a stab at this covenant release request if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
That'd be great.
In your packet, you received, or my office received a request to release a covenant for a building lot in the Conominial Highland subdivision on Fox Hill Road. We've been over, this, a few members of this board have reviewed a number of requests for release for covenants in this subdivision, whereas the developer back in the early 70s essentially carved out the roads, put covenants on, got the subdivision approved, sold building lots, and then skipped town. So over the years, you've, you've kind of checkerboarded it to get the covenants released, and most of the homes are built out, and most of the streets have been improved and are consistent with your subdivision rules and regulations. This one is also, there are two remaining streets in the subdivision that are substandard and would require additional intervention for those covenant releases on Balfour Lane and on Silverleaf Lane, but the lot in question is on Fox Hill Road is completely built out. I think it hasn't been released because no development has occurred in the site. It's a 10,000, 11,000 square foot lot, and it's in its own two, so you can only put a one-bedroom house on it, so I don't think it's been of all that much interest. But with that being said, they are selling the property, and the covenant is still attached to the property, and to convey it, they need the board to release it. Given that Fox Hill Road is built to standard, I would recommend releasing the covenant for the lot at 45 Fox Hill.
Do you want us to have them try to build, build a different part of the road, though?
Yeah, so many feet from their house.
But the, the lot, the portion of the road from lot line to lot line in front of their house is completely constructed.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only road over there that's done.
Balfour and Silverleaf, they have no frontage on those roads.
I don't have a problem with it.
Have a motion?
I make a motion to release.
Do we have anything? I don't see anything.
You just have the request. I have the official form to release here, but you have the request from the attorney in your packet.
And there's nothing, there's nothing else pending, like no other bond or work that we're, we're looking?
Just for the completion of the roads, which has been satisfied. And there was no general release recorded, so the way the town's been dealing with this has been upon the conveyance, lot by lot.
I make a motion to release the covenant to lot, what is it?
It's 45 Balfour Lane. I'm, I think it's Lot 35, but now I'm going to have to refer to the, to my packet.
25 Balfour Lane, lot, what is it, lot, what?
Map 26, block six.
It doesn't say. It says Book 1644, page 87.
Yeah.
That number.
That one.
You got that?
If you could have the motion capture the address, and I'll, I'll make sure that the appropriate documentation.
I made the motion.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Now we're late for the public hearing. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing for warrant article unnumbered to see if the town will vote to delete all references to selectmen or board of selectmen in the zoning bylaws and replace with select board. Anybody from the public? No? Anybody on the phone?
We're not, no Collins.
No Collins.
Matt phone?
And just by way of background, can I just give a little background why we're doing this now, for the folks watching? Article 1 at the town meeting in October approved the change of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. And the Attorney General recently approved the general bylaw changes that were approved at town meeting. But that Article 1 contemplated changing the zoning bylaw, and that article was not transmitted to this board by the Board of Selectmen for a public hearing. So you never held a public hearing because no one knew it was a zoning article.
Thank you.
As such, the Attorney General was forced to not approve the zoning portion of Article 1 from the October town meeting. And so, as a matter of housekeeping, the Select Board has submitted this article, article for your consideration so that all references to Board of Selectmen in the zoning bylaw will then reflect the change that was approved in the general bylaws in the October town meeting.
Got it.
Got it now.
So that, that's what's before you tonight and what we're holding a public hearing on now.
So do we take a vote to approve it, or do we take a vote to?
Any discussion from the board, any comments from the public. As such, you'll need to first close the public hearing and then, and then vote to make a recommendation to town meeting.
Okay.
Doesn't look like there's any public comment. So I.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I make a motion, we recommend it to, for acceptance to the Select Board.
By the, by town meeting?
By town meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
All right.
Okay, back to new business. LCP update from Weston and Sampson. Do we have Carolyn or Ashley?
Behind us.
Hello?
I'm here.
Oh, good.
I hear you.
Hi, can you, can you hear us? Sorry?
We can.
Here we are.
Hi.
Hello?
Hi.
How you doing?
Just a quick update, we're still in limbo on the website, waiting for contractual issues. I think that we, we'll give it a bit of time. We, at Weston and Sampson, we can always provide some backup for our website if needed, if it's not coming through on a timely way. So we'll keep working on that and, and hopefully come to a resolution on that soon. We are also scheduling the kickoff, and we have been going back and forth with Evan. We're thinking that Saturday, probably a Saturday morning would be best. We are looking at either March 26 or April 2, and we thought we would bring that to the board and see if there were any preferences or other things going on in the community that we might need to be aware of.
I don't know.
I'm not worried about anything on March 26.
I mean, the only thing I would check is like, is there Little League signup or, you know, soccer signup or something on us, on that's, on either of those Saturday meetings?
Yeah, I checked in with Catherine relative to the availability of, of the space, and we're also looking generally at the high school gymnasium and utilizing that space so we can get as many people in there as possible. And which is available on the 26th, they are holding their, like, Spring Musical or some theatrical performance in the evening, but we'll be looking to do this in, in the morning.
Yep.
I think the question whether or not it's the 26th or the 2nd really comes down to everything that we need to prepare between now and then to make those dates advantageous. This contracting issue with Citizen Lab is, is really, you know, this, the town manager's office is aware that this is my number one priority, but it's in the hands of council at this juncture, so we're really preparing alternative options, and we really wanted to make sure that this website was up and running at the outset and commencement of these activities. But at the very least, we're going to, we don't want to hold off too long, so at, at the 26th would probably give us adequate time to prepare everything, but April 2 would give us a little bit of cushion with regard to the website development. So either date would work. I know we have in our, our project timeline a kickoff in March, and I want to adhere to that timeline, but I also want to make sure that the kickoff meeting and the website are as functional as possible to launch the process. So we felt it would be prudent to bring it to the board to discuss it, to solidify a date, because we really need to hammer it out at date and location so we can begin producing all the literature and announcements and press releases, et cetera, to, you know, really start blasting the information out there. So that's, that's a point of discussion for the evening.
Joe, we discuss now, or?
Yeah.
Not to make it more personal for me, but I, I think April 2 would be better, but I am holding a Boys and Girls Club event that day that's going to have like 550 local town people in there.
On the 2nd?
On the 2nd.
At what time?
I think it's a lot of people that you're not going to get.
At what time, Joe?
It's 12 to 5.
Oh, that is.
At the pumping incident.
Okay. That's unfortunate.
I didn't know this, I'm sorry.
No, that, no, that's, that's what they're asking.
This is good to know.
It is what we need to know.
I think that'd be a better date to give them more time, I'm just letting you know.
But we'd be limited.
Well, we.
If we do one on the 2nd, we'd be.
Potentially, I mean, a lot of people like myself, there's a lot of people on the board and, you know, people who are connected to the town that probably would potentially want to be part of it.
Yeah, we don't want to compete with the Boys and Girls Club.
Well, they're going to be there, so obviously you're going to lose out their thoughts.
Right. Right.
And what time did you say it was at?
It's 12 to 5.
12 to 5. And we, I think we'd be looking at something like started in the morning and ran for three-ish hours. But when you, when you end up having competing events, people are going to choose. And if there's food and drink at yours, it's probably going to beat the pastry.
Well, it's at the poppy. As opposed to the high school.
Again, my office is amenable to whatever the board chooses, and we'll make sure that whatever date is most functional in, in the eyes of you all, we're prepared, but we certainly need to work out the nitty-gritty of the event date.
When will, when will we know that the website is launched?
Good question.
We had a discussion this morning relative to at what point do we say the contracting is taking too long and we need to pivot? That's kind of where I'm at internally with regard to project management. I'd like to have an answer within a week, because within a week, it takes about two to three weeks to onboard the website, and that means we could be ready for April, the beginning of April. But if we can't meet that deadline, then I think it's time to cut the loss on that platform and build out a webpage with our consultants. It won't be as, as I think Caroline said to me this morning, as sexy, but it'll be wholly as functional. It'll be completely functional.
Jazz it up, spice it up.
I, I want to continue to follow through with council because the issues with contracting are really related to the company being incorporated in Belgium and a lot of the language being specific to European practices and things like that, so I'm confident we can come to a solution, but it's if we can come to a timely solution that I'm most concerned about at this juncture. So I, I'm hoping to be able to report to you by email within a week that we have forward progress, and we can have a website up and running in April. But if we, if we don't have it shortly, Mary, I think the best thing to do will be to pivot and to build out our own webpage.
Build it yourself, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'd, I'd say do it March 26 or April 2, depending on how it fits in with the launch of the website. I, I think that.
We got to have a plan going.
That either date is fine with me as long as the website is accessible.
Excuse me, I'm, well, did I miss something when the fact that the information isn't there to start get the website going, or, I mean, we know plenty of people can build the website. What's the issue?
We don't have, it's the contract with the, yeah. But I said the same thing earlier, so there's, there's plenty of people who can do a website.
The other thing is we want to make sure we're driving people with our information and, and literature materials.
We don't want to rush anything.
To the, the appropriate webpage.
Right.
We can always change that information as we move, and we are obviously onboarding the, our existing town website in its limited capacity with information as we go. But it's our number one issue at the moment with regard to the LCP is, is this contracting issue. It was unanticipated, it's kind of out of our, our control at the moment, I'm, I'm working on it as readily as possible.
Oh, I understand. Because we don't want to lallygoggle, obviously, but we want to, you know, but do it correctly.
And I guess, Joe, is your question, can, can we host a, our kickoff event, a successful kickoff event without it? Yes, I think we absolutely can. But it's an issue that I lack clarity on, and I'm unable to give you a firm report on today.
I would, I mean, obviously, we don't want to, we don't want to compete with other things going on in town, so.
You do what you want, I'm just making.
No, my, my question would be, check with the rec department, see if there's anything, because this is, we're getting into like Little League signup, T-ball, all that stuff. If there's something going on, on one of those mornings.
Springtime, yeah, as things happen.
Well, we're, we're looking only, I'm, I've, unless you have an, you want an alternate location, I feel like the high school gymnasium is the best.
No, I'm just thinking of getting people there. If there's, if there's signups for Little League, they're going to be at the field.
Otherwise busy doing something else.
Right.
I understand. So do you?
I think you need to have a leeway, though, so that we don't have to meet again.
Right.
So.
Give you, give you the ability to make a decision.
All right, so is the board telling me that?
That's what I said. I said either or.
Whichever one has least competing.
But also has the ability to have that information that needs to get out to the public. If, if, for instance, if this contract goes through, but they don't have the website up and running by the 26th, let's say, but we have the information so that we can direct the people towards a website that'll be up a week later, that would be fine, but if, if, you know, Wesley Sampson's not going to have, if they jump in, if we pivot, and they're not going to be able to have something definitive to put out at the 26th, then it's a, it's kind of a waste of time.
Right.
Understood.
You might want to go to the 2nd. So I have no problem with giving the authority to you to say, make a decision based on the information you get with town council and what have you, with the contract, and then with Wesley Sampson as far as Wesley Sampson.
I'm on board, Jack, I get it.
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
I, I have a question, I mean, we talked about having the schools be a part of this.
Yes.
My daughter's a, our teacher at the Quashnet.
Cool.
And I asked her, would it be nice to have the kids draw a picture what they like about Mashpee or write a poem? And she said, oh, that'd be a good idea.
She'll be hearing more from, from my office.
She wiped her nose, I could be, she haven't heard about it yet.
So they, they were on school vacation this week, so the superintendent and all of the principals and school teachers from all of the school system are developing a steering committee to work directly with me on, on implementing the youth engagement strategies. So we will have literature for them next week, and I'll be meeting with this group of students in the very near future to begin that process. So she'll, she'll be hearing more from me, probably through her administrative staff at the Quashnet.
Another thing she said, especially I like to, because I'd like to get a prize, maybe the best ones, we could put.
It's not in the budget.
No, we could put it in town hall, their pitches.
You're paying for it, Dennis, you're paying for it.
Like that, you know, or put it, and then when we have the public meetings, we can have all their drawings up at the public meetings, you'll just.
I think that's great. I mean, that's really the purpose of the Youth Engagement Toolkit that Ashley worked on, is to give license to the teachers to be able to implement these types of fun activities for the kids and to make them valuable for us through the process.
But I was thinking another thing, too. That way we can get the parents involved, maybe send a letter home saying what we're doing, and then also saying.
Exactly.
Yeah, everybody going, yeah.
Public meetings.
No, that's the goal, yeah.
The more people we get, the better.
Yep, absolutely. That's, that's kind of a, there's, it's a, there's a dual purpose served by doing the Youth Engagement Toolkit, and one is activating the kids, but also utilizing them as a means to communicate to their parents.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay. What, do we have to make a vote to give you the power, or just?
No, we are.
I, I, I understand the consensus. I'll, I'm going to update you as soon as I have.
I was just figuring schools closing pretty quick. I mean, if we want to get the, the kids to participate.
Yeah, February break throws a wrench in things, but we'll be up and running with Youth Engagement Toolkit quite soon.
Good.
Perfect. Anything else? Ashley?
Well, just that we're, we're working on the existing conditions. We should have those drafted to Evan this week, and he'll review them, and I'm sure there'll be some back and forth and questions and comments, and then I believe he'll forward them onto the board for your review.
Yes.
And then, just so you know, because you asked about it last time, we do have our graphic artists working on posters and flyers and Facebook ads, and we're hoping to have a choice of three logos for the students to pick one that will brand the process.
Great, great.
But that's all we have for updates this week.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. There we go. Next, under new business, vote to set public hearing date for an application for special permit modification made by Michael and Lisa Canata to operate a family-owned pizzeria to be located at 2B Center Street, map 36 parcel 47. Proposal is to return the building to original permitted design and use as a restaurant, and I think it's in your package.
I'm very excited. Shouldn't give my own opinion, though.
What's the date we have any?
Proposing April 6.
April 6 at 7:10.
I make a motion to set a public hearing for April 6 at 7:10 for the owner of pizzeria located at 28, or what's that, 2B?
2B.
2B.
2B Center Street.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Dennis. Next, vote to set public hearing date for application for a definitive subdivision plan made by, I'm going to butcher this.
Marcello.
Marcello. Mulaney.
Mulaney.
Located at 235 Main Street, Route 130, map 26 parcel 6.
532.
532.
532.
Sorry, 532. And that is also in your packet.
Yes.
Recommending same day at 7:20.
April 6 again?
Yes. Yes.
I make a motion to set a public hearing for five thirty-two Main Street, Route one-thirty, for a public hearing at seven-thirty?
Seven-twenty.
Seven-twenty.
I'll second the seven-twenty motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
So, can I ask a question? So, they did the preliminary?
Yes, you guys approved a preliminary plan, I don't know, three months ago?
Yeah, was it three?
Ish.
Okay, next. Vote to set public hearing date for petition zoning articles proposed for action at the May first, twenty-twenty-two town meeting.
Again, recommending April sixth at seven-thirty.
I make a motion to set a public hearing for the zoning articles for, what was it, April sixth?
Yep.
At seven-thirty.
All in favor?
Second.
Second, now all.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
You already did the covenant, right?
Yep. The only thing I had, and it's in your package, is Andrew's focus article, Andrew Gottlieb. I don't know if you had a chance to read it.
I didn't though. I mean, I couldn't read the.
Yeah, the, the copy didn't, but I, I'll send the, the PDF to Evan, and he'll send it out to you. I just thought it was succinctly, sort of got to the point of what the problem is.
That's what we just talked about.
Yeah, it's, it was.
That's like the working group that Evan's on.
Yeah, really good.
Andrew, Andrew, in his capacity at the APC, has been participating in that. They're getting ready to roll out there.
Oh, Andrew's part of the workshop, the working group too?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go.
They're getting to a point where they're getting ready to roll out a series of maps that they produce with hack that are really trying to get at, in a nutshell, we don't need to fight over every piece of land for development. Some, some are suitable for increased density, others are not.
Right.
And there's an exercise to map what may be more suitable and what might not be, and so we'll look forward to those maps. I did comment on them early on in the process.
Good. Okay, town planner report.
Well, we covered LCP. I have, unless the board has additional questions from what you just received, I think my direction is pretty clear, so look out for emails from me as I get more clarity. I've been hounding the office for this contracting question, so I'm really hopeful we can resolve it soon. Otherwise, you'll have specific information writing from me about how we're going to proceed.
I have faith in you, you're going to figure it out.
Thanks, buddy. I do, I did provide a memo as directed by the board relative to the reestablishment,